The three emergency exits, one, two and three. Don't use the lift on your way out. There isn't any practice fire alarms scheduled for this evening, so if it all goes off, it's for real. Can I ask you all to switch mobile phones to silent or switch them off? As a committee, we understand that matters under consideration tonight are emotive, to put it bluntly. However, while this is a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting, and I'd ask you to refrain from booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance, please. We move now to the main business this evening. Item number one on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 6th of July have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content, I've signed these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence, please.
We have apologies from councillor Martin Lear, thank you.
Carol, councillor Cover?
Thank you councillor Isher. Could you add Jill Hargreaves, she had every intention of coming, but I'm afraid she's in too much pain to sit in a car.
Thank you very much. Item three, declaration of interest. Emma, before the meeting, have you had any?
None before the meeting, but I believe Farnham Town councillors would declare a non pecuniary interest in the applications on the agenda. Thank you.
That's noted, thank you very much. And Emma, have there been any questions from members of the public?
None received, chairman.
And relevant updates from government, to government guidance and legislation since the last meeting? Peter Cleveland?
Thank you chairman, yes, just have one matter to update members on, and it's with regards to the draft local plan. Members will be aware that on the 19th of July, full council agreed to the publication of the draft local plan, part one. The six-week publication of the plan is now agreed to start on the 19th of August. Once published, officers will make specific reference to relevant policies and will provide advice on weight that can be given to relevant policies within the plan within, in determining planning applications before you. The Planning Practice Guidance provides advice in this regard, and at this stage, draft policies will only attract limited weight. However, as the plan progresses, the weight to be given to policies will increase following each stage of progression. Officers will advise members of the current position at the appropriate time. Just a point to add, so tonight, there's not considered to be any applications that are caught by the draft policies or a material in their consideration. After the six-week publication date, we may start looking at different weight to policies which we can give, so if there's a policy that's attracted little or no objection through the initial six-week phase, we feel we can start to give those policies some weight. Where we've got policies which have attracted a lot of objection and they require further consideration, we will be advising that they carry less weight. But officers' recommendation for this evening is, as I say, the applications before you aren't considered to be caught or conflict with the draft local plan, and therefore we're recommended that the applications be considered against the 2002 local plan policies, the MPPF and our relevant adopted guidance. So hopefully that is useful, but happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Members content? Good. Item six, Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area Position Statement on the Current Capacity. The table printed in the agenda has been updated with the latest SANG figures. Peter, would you like to elaborate?
Thank you chairman, I've got nothing to add to the report, that picks up the position of the updated availability at Farnham Park. Officers consider that if we were to make a decision which requires mitigation in terms of the impact on the Thames Basin Heath, we would be acting lawfully. The avoidance strategy has been agreed by full council, adopted to take forward, which gives us the additional capacity. That capacity comes around the revision to the calculation in the availability, and that obviously increases to a SANG capacity of 2,184 homes to be accommodated, subject to appropriate legal agreements for contributions to ongoing maintenance of the SANG. So our view, and that full council and of Natural England, is that is a lawful policy you can rely on in mitigating impact of development on the SPA, so hopefully that is useful. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Members, do you have any questions? In that case, are you content to note the report? Thank you very much. I turn quarterly enforcement update, I turn to Beth Hearn Smith to give an update, please.
Thank you chairman. So the purpose of this report is to update members with the performance of the enforcement team for the quarter, April to June. If I turn to page nine, you'll see the western area site-specific updates. Just one point to raise, the land north of River Lane, apologies, the update from that was missed, and in fact, the hearing was today, although it was adjourned until the 26th of September due to late submissions by the appellant. If I then take you to page 11 and correct the heading of section two to the previous quarter, you'll note in the first table that we received over double the complaint, number of complaints in this quarter than the previous quarter, and similarly closed about double the amount. Our cases on hand stands at 164 at the end of that quarter, but at the end of business today, it was 157. The table at the bottom of the page, you'll note that our performance against the performance indicator remains high and fairly comparable to same quarter last year. The rest of the report is for noting, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Beth. Members? No questions? Thank you very much indeed, Beth. Nothing on the webcam there?
No, we'll come to the sound.
Yeah. We have a failure of the webcast, sound is going out but not pictures of your good sense. Sorry about that. Yeah, we broke it at sudden. Applications for planning permission, should there be any site visits, they'll take place on the 30th of August at a time to be agreed. We now move to item A1, WA2016 oblique 0877. Application under regulation three for the formation of 16 parking spaces in College Gardens for the use of the existing dwellings at 116 College Gardens, Farnham, GU97EL. And Rachel's going to introduce her application. Thank you.
Thank you chairman. The application site comprises a small cul-de-sac known as College Gardens, which is accessed from West Street in central Farnham. College Gardens is notable for the areas of lawn and landscaping to the front of many of the dwellings. Their main road within College Gardens is adopted and managed by Surrey County Council, who intend to introduce new parking restrictions. The management of the road does not form part of this application. The proposal seeks to provide 16 new parking spaces, which will be available through the development of some of the existing landscaped areas fronting the dwellings in College Gardens. The proposed parking spaces would specifically serve 116 College Gardens, and these dwellings are managed via a trust specifically for elderly or disabled residents. Other properties in close proximity are not managed in association with this trust. These photos show some of the garden space that will be reduced by the proposal, and the relationship of College Gardens to West Street and the wider conservation area. And here, the proposed new spaces and associated changes can be seen in more detail. Some existing areas of garden space would be lost, particularly to the north of the site. Two trees would be lost to the northwest of the site, but other existing trees within College Gardens, including those marking the entrance, would be retained. New railings would be included to help separate the parking area from the remaining green space. Some existing features such as lamp posts would be repositioned. The applicant has indicated a willingness to undertake further landscaping and tree planting, and the Historic Buildings Officer and Tree and Landscape Officer are satisfied with the proposal. The proposal will provide 16 parking spaces for use by elderly or disabled residents. No harm has been identified to the conservation area or nearby listed buildings, and the proposal seeks to retain as much green space as possible, and to use materials in keeping with the historic character of the area. The public benefit from the proposal is considered to outweigh any harm to the visual amenity of the area. The proposal would not result in material harm to the amenities of neighbouring occupiers. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, impact to heritage, access inequality, trees, highways issues, biodiversity and the impact upon the SPA and the AQMA. The matters for members' judgment are the impact to the visual amenity and the impact to residential amenity. And I would like to draw members' attention to the update sheet where additional third-party representations are noted, and an additional condition is recommended regarding tree protection. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Rachel. We now move to the area of public speaking. I understand the procedure has been explained, so can I first introduce the object as Sam Urie speak? Take the next chair, please, the next one. Yeah, please. Sorry to mess you about, it's easier that way. Okay, you have four minutes from the time you stop speaking. Thank you.
I, Samantha Urie, have lived at Two Potters Gate for the last eight years. It is my wish to have my objections to this planning application heard by councillors. As my freedom of information, my freedom of information disclosures points to a great uncertainty as to the status of the land that is subject to the application before you tonight. Firstly, the application was last amended on the 29th of June. I believe any changes should be subject to further consultation. The senior transport development officer for Surrey County Council, in his email on the 24th of June 2016, states that the 16 places will never be subject to a zone A restriction. Therefore, policing will be down to Waverley Borough Council. Will they really walk all the way to College Gardens where there is no ready fine income? This will lead to illegal parking in the Hewitt Trust area, which will be dangerous for vulnerable tenants and block access for carers, ambulance and doctors. Carers will under this scheme find parking impossible, as they will not be able to get a zone A permit. Parking a distance away, the little time residents receive for care will be cut back even further. The loss of trees to those who live in the area and can't get out and about is detrimental to their well-being and against the Human Rights Act, which says everyone has a right to enjoy their home. In the adopted Waverley planning guidance, two-bedroomed houses not in the immediate town centre should have two parking spaces. When Waverley offered me a secured tenancy of the old wardens' property for College Gardens, it came with two parking spaces, signed to this day as warden and deputy warden. It was clearly stated to me in the presence of my family support officer that the two spaces in College Gardens were available for the use of my mother and by me. I suffer from complex, I can't say the word, ailment, ailment, that's it, and live with my elderly mother who needs easy access to her car for her mobility and independence. If planning goes ahead and Surrey CC turn the eight parking spaces left in College Gardens into a zone A area, this will have a serious impact on the other six properties of Potters Gate and College Gardens which are owned by Waverley Borough Council. I would like to add that these tenants are also elderly, disabled and have long-term illnesses and need to park by their properties. The rights to be, their rights to be happy in their homes will also be taken away from them. If we can turn College Gardens car park into a Waverley residence only for Potters Gate and College Gardens, this will help all tenants and make this small cul-de-sac a safer place to live. From the day we heard about all the changes, the tenants offered to pay Farnham rate permits to keep this area peaceful as possible for all residents. I therefore ask councillors to look again at the legal issues surrounding the land at College Gardens and to look, as I have, at the exchanges of emails between various legal departments and the Waverley and Surrey offices. Thank you very much for this opportunity to put my concerns to you.
Thank you very much indeed. I now turn to supporter Ruth Bailey to speak. Good evening Ruth, if you just hit the big black button in front of you, the red light comes on, it's all yours, four minutes.
I'm Ruth Bailey, and I live at Three College Gardens in one of the Hewitt Trust bungalows. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of the 16 bungalows in College Gardens, as many of them cannot be here, as they are elderly and disabled. Under the terms of the trust, the residents will always be in this category and need parking. The proposed 16 private park spaces on the private trust land, which is to be funded by the trust fund, which has been agreed by Waverley executives acting as trustees after seeking legal advice, are desperately needed by the residents. The residents who have a vehicle, some of which like myself have motability vehicles or have blue badges, need guaranteed parking outside of their bungalows. Those without vehicles still need the parking for their visitors, many of which are carers, nurses, doctors and relatives who visit as carers, 365 days of the year. This outside support is vital to enable the residents to have some independence, quality of life and the ability to live in their home. They require help with some very basic daily tasks, getting out of bed, washing, dressing, preparation of meals and having medication. Such visitors urgently need guaranteed places to park, as they only have an allotted time to help each client. This time cannot be spent looking for parking. There is a general shortage of parking in Farnham, so without guaranteed parking outside of their homes on the Hewitt Trust land, there is nowhere else for the trust residents to park, nor is there enough space for them to park in the road, which belongs to the local authority, as the road is used by residents and their visitors in adjoining roads, e.g. Potters Gate, West Street, and tenants in local authority masonettes in College Gardens, as well as visitors to the town. The decision which is made, about to be made, is life-changing for the Hewitt Trust residents. If permission is given, it means a better quality of life for the elderly and disabled. They will be free of the constant worry of where they, they and their vital visitors can park, thus giving them the freedom to come and go as needed without stress and the ability to get the much-needed care they receive. Without residents' parking, the residents will have a life of worry and stress and will leave them vulnerable and at risk of not getting the care and the availability to park which they need. Many would not be able to remain living in their homes, which would be devastating for them. Please show us that you care for the elderly and vulnerable in Farnham. We understand that both Farnham Civic Society and the town council have concerns. As residents, we are committed to participating in a further community history project, to install an information lectern about the site and to restore the boundary wall on West Street to its former glory.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, members, I turn it to you now. Councillor Williamson.
Thank you, thank you very much chairman. The issue as I see it is not, is not the removal of the green spaces, you know, taking the trees out in the conservation area, or for that matter, the effect that it's going to have on the, on the listed buildings, all of which are regrettable, but I could live with them if the result was an improvement for Ruth and Sam who've just spoken. I'm concerned though, I'm concerned as the ward member, because I think despite what the officers' report says about just considering this in isolation, I think we would be delinquent, or I would be delinquent, if we didn't look at it in its totality and its effect on the residents as a whole. Could we perhaps, is that the best diagram? I think it probably is. For those people who don't know College Gardens, and I was, I know it quite well and I've had a few meetings there, in fact, I've had more meetings on this than anything else in the last year. The, to the left, to the south of College Gardens, there are Waverley-tenanted properties. To the right and to the top are the Hewitt Price, I'm not quite sure which hat we should have on, as Hewitt Price trustees or as Waverley or as the planning committee, anyway, that the ones to the right are the Hewitt Price properties. At the moment, there is a sign which, on the cul-de-sac, which says parking for residents only. There are inadequate spaces in that cul-de-sac, almost at any time of the day, for the residents and their visitors. The, so the additional parking spaces, I think are a good idea, you know, it's, like I said, it's regrettable that green space has got to be lost within a conservation area, but nonetheless, it will significantly improve, as we've heard very eloquently from Ruth, that it will improve their, I could say amenity value, it's far stronger than amenity value, it's their way of life. So I haven't got an objection with that. What I do have a strong objection to is the removal of, by Surrey County Council, simultaneously of the, the residents-only parking on the cul-de-sac, which means that Waverley's tenants on the left-hand side, who are, you know, equally infirmed or elderly, will have to join the, and I should explain for those people who don't visit the centre of Farnham as people are coming home from work, zone A parking is a, it's a rat race. People come home early from work so they can find somewhere near to their home. There are people touring around the town looking for parking spaces. Once that becomes a zone A category parking, this will, it'd be like bees around a honeypot. All the people on West Street will home in on that as a nice easy place to park. And I think what Sam said was correct, it will have a detrimental effect on those parking slots which are off the street as well, which are reserved for the residents of Hewitt Price, but the fact is, people when they're looking for somewhere to park, don't bother about these things, it will not be policed, I mean, there are no wardens around, and even if they were, I suspect that they wouldn't walk all the way down, down West Street to look at it, they stay in the, in the car parks in the centre of town. I just think this is a classic example of unjoined-up thinking. It's, Surrey County Council could very easily, at the stroke of a pen, make that, or not even make it, retain it as it currently is, rather than changing it to residents only. It would then satisfy the, the other residents of the lane who are Waverley tenants, and equally, it would protect the access to, to the new car parking spaces, which I think are a good idea. And I just can't see why common sense doesn't come to bear on this, and I think we should absolutely make it a condition that it does. Thank you chairman.
I'd just like to endorse everything councillor Williamson's just said, you know, nobody's against the 16 new spaces at all, it's a no-brainer, it, you know, will help all those residents of the trust, but he's absolutely right, to take away the residents' parking rights from the other people and just put in the zone A, just, it just seems to make no sense. When, when this came into the town council, I think there was a sort of lot of disbelief really that they would do that, because knowing how these zones work in Farnham and the difficulty, as councillor Williamson has described, you know, it doesn't matter which zone you're in, it's a fight when you get home to find a space, and if you are, have mobility issues, you can't park miles away and walk, it's just impossible. So how, is my question really to the officers, you know, this is a complicated thing, because the officers will say to us, well, the Surrey zone A is absolutely nothing to do with us, we're just looking at the 16 spaces, but of course, it's the knock-on effect. So how can we take this forward? Not wishing to stand in the way of the residents getting better parking, the 16 residents, but to protect the amenity, the ease of parking for the other residents in the Waverley tenants and the other buildings, if I could have an answer to that, if there is one, thanks Louise.
Louise?
If I can just show you a plan that has been given to us by Surrey County Council, these are their proposals for the restrictions, the sort of brown line are the existing restrictions, and the red line is the proposed restrictions with the proposed car parking spaces in blue and disabled basements in green. These, Surrey County Council have advised us that these proposals are going ahead, so there will be restrictions on College Gardens. It's a separate issue from this planning application, which is for additional car parking on top of the restrictions which are there at present. Thank you.
Thank you Louise. Councillor Williamson, you want to come back?
Yeah, I gotta say, I mean, I went there today, the sign is still there, which says that it's residents' parking only. It's proud, it sticks up, it says private in front of the road as you come in. I've had a discussion with, with Surrey County Council officers on this, and I've gotta say, I was most unimpressed. I could use some really crude words, but I'm not, I'm not going to do. They just need to get off at their backside and do it. In fact, they don't have to do anything, they just have to not do something.
Peter Cleveland?
Thank you chairman, yeah, I think, you know, completely understand the concerns, and as Louise has set out, there's two processes going on here, and in raising any concern with this application, it's not going to overcome the, the issue that's, or the decision Surrey County Council have made, so I think I'm not going to offer any more comments on the current application, because I think people have made their, members and members of the public have made their comments clear on that. But what I think is, what we could take away of it is, on behalf of the planning committee, we can write to Surrey County Council again, expressing the planning committee's significant concerns about that decision which is separate to the planning application, setting out those specific concerns in consultation with, with members, if that's of assistance, but we obviously can't control it under this planning application, so that is my recommendation as a way to look, to take this forward. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Peter. Councillor Williamson?
Thanks very much, Jay, if I could just come back on that, why can you not make it a condition? You make everything conditions, why can you not make this a condition?
So, thank you chairman, so the requested condition is to stop them doing the parking, or prevent them to taking, taking that, that's not something that we can control, that wouldn't be a reasonable condition to apply, it, some of it falls outside the red lead, red line boundary of the planning application, and also, it's a decision that the county council have made in their position as the county highway authority to apply those, so as a planning condition, that's not something that we could control reasonably. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Potter?
Thank you chairman, I support the idea, I fully appreciate we desperately need, need the spaces, but we seem to be, we seem to be going round in circles, everyone, I think, or the majority of colleagues here, without predetermining it, want these spaces to go ahead, but we have the separate issue, which actually is a separate issue if we're purely talking in planning terms, but it's not. if we're purely talking in planning terms, but it's not because of the impact. I think we need to go back to Surrey, and we need to get this resolved. I understand the implication there would be, if we did that, that it would delay our decision, but is there no way we could possibly, I suggest defer this now, as Mr Cleveland has suggested, go ahead with a very strong letter, but also representations to the county council highways department, explaining why we have had to defer it, and actually try and resolve this, because my concern is that if we, if we are, if we do just grant it tonight, we're not going to sort out the rest of the problem, and we're going to have some residents who are happy, some who aren't. I know you never please everybody, but on this, having now looked at the map that Missy Andel put up, that, of the, there of the proposed restrictions, I mean, it is quite a serious issue, and that's my suggestion of how maybe we can at least try, I'm not saying it'll work, but at least try to overcome it, but I don't know what colleagues think.
First of all, I'll go to councillor Storey, and then councillor Williamson.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I absolutely agree with everything that everybody has said so far about the lack of desire to see this become Zone A. I don't agree with councillor Potts in suggesting that we defer this. This is an application for 16 parking spaces on land which is not part of Surrey highways. If we try to condition the decision, the applicant hasn't got control over Zone A, so the condition is irrelevant, and deferring doesn't twist the arm of Surrey County Council to stop them from doing anything. I think we need to treat this as an application on its own merits, as we should. I certainly will be supporting the decision, the recommendation. And at the same time, as a group of councillors, we should be ensuring that this council makes representations to Surrey County Council in the strongest possible way to ask them to defer their own decision about converting College Gardens into Zone A. We strongly oppose that, and I think the leader of the council should take a lead. Thank you.
Councillor Williamson, please come back.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As I say, I find myself agreeing with councillor Potts, which is sometimes unusual. I'm just worried that if we make this decision and agree to put these 16 places there, and we don't dissuade Surrey County Council from not imposing its cut, its Zone A parking, then we will be creating a real mess for the future. It just, it's going to create all sorts of issues. I mean, I think if we deferred it and put a really strong letter, and Waverley, at all its levels, got behind it, I would have thought we could have moved them fairly quickly.
Thank you. Councillor Coburn.
The problem is, I am with councillor Storey on this, knowing how they advertise their parking and how long it all takes, and sitting on the local committee, it takes ages to get these parking things in place, so, you know, the deferral we're looking at would be months, if not years, you know, to get something put back. It's not to say that I'm not for doing something with Surrey, I just don't think deferring this application is the answer. I think, you know, we have to make a decision on what's in front of us, but the representation we make to Surrey has to be really strong. We've got the local committee, we've got county councillors, we've got officers, and I think, you know, as a committee we can write, but then as individuals we can do something as well, and I think we have to act to get Surrey to change its mind, but knowing that if this has already been out to advertisement, as I take it it has been, I mean, that's six months or something ridiculous, isn't it? And then to withdraw it, we're going through the same sort of process. And I think really, you know, that deferral in this case is really not an option, but I do think, you know, what we do send to Surrey has to be strong and repeated and consistent. We can't just, you know, write one letter and pretend that it's going to happen, because it won't.
I'll come back to you, councillor Williamson, and then I'll go back to the deferral.
Just one point, when is the date for this to actually take place? I mean, in reality, in terms of construction?
Louise, Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Williamson. We haven't got a firm date, but what I have got, an email in front of me, saying that they're holding out on ordering this work until the sort of a resolution on this application, well, not a resolution, but a decision on this application to be made. So I know that you've suggested a deferral, but if we don't make a decision, there's the likelihood that they will just go ahead, but if it is approved, they will then instruct the work to carry out, so that's the way it's worded on this email, after, sorry, after the off-street parking has been constructed. So we haven't got a specific date, so I went around, roundabout answer to that, but yeah.
I don't want to stop the debate, because councillor Pritchard wants to come back in, and then I will ask if anyone wishes to second the deferral.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm reluctant to make a decision on an application which I don't know whether it's going to work or not, and, you know, say this is a different application and we're looking at a semi-stashed house, you know, it's quite easy to see, you know, where that's, where that planning is going to go ahead. I can't with this. I think that the spaces would be great, but like, I totally agree with councillor Williamson and councillor Potts, we do, I, in my opinion, need to defer this with a date, an actual date where we can say, well, we're going to defer this for a month, two months period, and then come back and see how far we've got with Surrey, and decide it on its merits again, because we need more factual information on this, really.
Thank you. I've let it go on a little bit, but councillor Potts has talked about deferral. I think our lawyer wants to come in first.
Thank you, Chairman. It's totally a member's gift to defer the application, but I'd advise against that, because it's not fair on the applicant. The application is on its own merits, and it's providing parking for residents within 116 college bases, nothing to do with Surrey County's decision, so I'd recommend that you carry on with the application, the decision tonight, and then take up the Surrey issue as a separate issue going forward, but it's up to you, members, whether or not you want to defer, but I'd advise against it.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Hodd, do you want to come in?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm interested to know why Surrey County Council are holding out a decision until we decide what we're going to do. Are they going to do it, or are they not?
They've indicated that they are going to do it. What they have indicated, however, is they will wait until the off-street car parking spaces are in place before they put those restrictions in. I don't know the reason for that, but I would assume that to cause less disruption, so that there are other spaces for the residents to parking.
Councillor Potts.
I'm actually getting slightly confused now, because we're getting, I know councillor Storey's saying, take the application on its own merits, but then we're getting, I think, some very vague information. Again, I realise, you know, we're talking about another authority, but my view is that we should defer, and I would only suggest, I suggest we time-limit it to a month, I'm not suggesting we delay this indefinitely, and that gives us some time to actually firstly go back to Surrey, because I actually don't think, to take councillor Pritchard's point, that we do have sufficient facts as well. Surrey are saying they won't do it until we've done this, and there's all this manana going on, and we owe it to all the residents to actually have a firm plan, and at the moment, to be frank with you, from what I can see in the papers and what I'm hearing, our officers haven't been given sufficient information from Surrey as well, but I'm only suggesting that we defer for a month to allow us to actually go back and really go in hard in terms of the issues. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, to councillor Coburn's point, we all know that everything gets advertised for six months, it may be that we can't turn it straight around, but at least it gives us a chance to see where this is all going, but I was only suggesting for a month, Chairman, no more, because that wouldn't be fair on the applicant.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Potts. You have put forward a deferral, do you have a second for that? Councillor Williamson, in that case, we'll talk to the deferral, we've heard from our lawyer. So, first of all, councillor Williamson.
Thanks very much. In terms of the actual construction, from memory, I thought that the work wasn't going to be done till the end of the year, and I know there's an officer somewhere here, actually she's, I think it's the end of the year, therefore a month's deferral isn't going to, isn't going to delay the actual implementation of it. So, yeah, I just think it's a sensible thing to do.
Councillor MacLeod.
I wonder if I could inquire, Chairman, if Surrey have completely finished their consultation process on their proposal? The reason I ask that, actually, I find this rather strange story, and I've been heavily involved with Surrey in my own area, and they were very responsive to what the residents want to do. In fact, we designed our own parking scheme, and they put in exactly what we wanted to happen. So I find it very strange that Surrey are producing something here that seems so against what the residents want, and my inquiry is, have they completely finished their consultation process? Is this a completely done deal as far as Surrey's concerned?
I'll ask the officers to reply to that, and then we'll take a vote on deferral.
Thank you, Chairman. As far as officers are aware, they've made a decision to carry those changes out to parking restrictions. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, we have a proposal and second for deferral for one month till the next meeting of Western Eric Committee. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against?
One.
Thank you. Abstentions? None. Thank you. So we'll defer, sorry. Yeah, Peter.
Just a question, if I may, Chairman, just to clarify the reasons for deferral, and just make sure members are happy of what we're going away with. I think there's two points that have sort of been highlighted. Firstly, contacting Surrey County Council with regards to their decision on the parking restriction. We can draft a letter in consultation with the leader for that to go out to the county council, and I think that's one point. And the second point, there was a comment about further information about the impact of the parking. Can I, I wasn't completely sure on that, I just wanted to get some clarification on if that was a second point you wanted us to have a look at. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Coburn.
I mean, is there any way we can ask a Surrey officer to come along to our Western and answer questions? Because, you know, we need to know, you know, why this is happening, and what, you know, how they've arrived at this decision, we need to see the workings, as it were, you know, not just get an odd answer.
Councillor Williamson.
I think I'd sooner see a degree of lobbying with Surrey County Council, rather than an officer come here and try and defend his position, which is what he would do. So I'd sooner we try to change it over before we invited him to, I mean, if we're successful, I'm very happy that he comes here and explains why he's done the sensible thing.
So we want them to complete the circle? Or square the circle? Yeah. Are you happy with that?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that position, and we'll work with the local ward members and the leader to take that forward. Thank you, Chairman.
And that applies to Zone A, doesn't it? The intention and implementation date for that. Right, so, there we are, we move to deferral on that. Item A2 is WA 2016 0668, erection of building to provide 14 flats with undercroft parking using existing access, altered vehicular access from St Cross Road, change of use and alterations to part of the existing building to provide A1 retail and B1 units office light industrial with associated parking, following demolition of the remaining buildings on site together with associated works, amplified by additional information received on the 24th of May 2016 at 74 to 84 East Street, Farnham. And Gemma's going to introduce this application.
Thank you, Chairman. The site lies to the north of East Street, to the east of St Cross Street, and to the south of the public footpath number 97. Whilst the land surrounding the site rises from north to south to north, the site itself has been levelled, resulting in a retaining wall five metres high, running along the northern boundary of the site. Public footpath 97 runs above the retaining wall from east to west, linking Sumner Road to St Cross Road. The western side of the site contains the built form associated with the existing car showroom on the site. The main showroom comprises of a single-storey predominantly glazed building with first-floor accommodation, served by a triangular dormers within a gablet roof. The dealership offices associated with the car showroom are contained within a two-storey hipped roof building that lies on the junction of East Street and St Cross Road. There are two single-storey garage building, gable garage buildings, used for workshop purposes in association with the car showroom, both of which front onto Cross Street. Workshops are also accommodated in a two-storey hipped building and a two-storey cat slide roof building. The proposal would result in the demolition of the existing workshops and garage buildings. These are highlighted on the plans in purple. The existing showroom and dealership offices would be retained, and these are shown in grey. The proposal involves the change of use of the existing car showroom to a Class A1 shop use, a change of use of the existing dealership offices to Class B1 office use, the closure of one of the existing vehicular accesses from East Street, the creation of a new vehicular access onto East Street, and the modification of an existing access onto East Street, the consolidation of two existing vehicle accesses off East Street into a single vehicular access, a hard surface car parking area accommodating 22 vehicle car parking spaces, and the erection of 14 flats incorporating 12 two-bedroom and two three-bedroom units. The proposed ground floor of the new building would comprise a parking area to serve the proposed development, providing for the parking of 28 vehicles. The ground floor would also provide for secure cycle parking and refuge and recycling storage. The proposed first floor would accommodate units 1 to 6. As a result of the land levels, unit 1 and 2 would be served by private graded garden area, which would be located to the north of the site. Future occupiers of the site would also have access to a graded communal courtyard to the north of the site. Units 3 to 6 would be served by balconies. The proposed second floor would accommodate units 7 to 12. Unit 7 and 9 to 12 would be served by balconies. Unit 8 would be served by a rooftop patio that would be accessed by an internal staircase within that unit. The proposed third floor would accommodate units 13 and 14, both of which would be served by terraces. The proposed Class A1 shop unit and Class B1 office units would be reconfigured internally to provide the required space. This is the ground floor, and this would be the proposed first floor. The proposed built form accommodating the residential development would face onto East Street. It would take the form of a group of buildings with individual characteristics, with both principal and subordinate... principal and subordinate elements to form a building hierarchy that would centre around a pair of semi-detached villas of Edwardian influence. In terms of the height of the built form, officers are satisfied that this would integrate with the existing built form of Farnham with our existing examples of two, three, and four-storey development. Furthermore, topography of the land and the surrounding ridge heights of existing built form would prevent the overall height of the proposed development from appearing in Congress within its context. The built form has been clearly influenced by surrounding Edwardian and Georgian built forms and would benefit from relevant traditional detailings. The street scene demonstrates the height of the existing surrounding built forms and how the proposal would be integrated within this context. And this would be the street scene from the rear public footpath. This is an artist's perspective of the proposal from the junction of St Cross Street and East Street. Moving on to some photographs of the site, this photograph shows the existing car showroom and workshop building from East Street. The workshop in the background is to be demolished. This photograph is prior to the current situation on the site, which is currently boarded. This is the existing workshop building to be demolished and these are the two garage buildings to be demolished as part of the proposal. These are photographs of the existing car showroom and dealership offices that are to be retained and the use changed to Class A1 shop use and Class B1 office use. This photograph shows the relationship within the site with number 73 East Street, which is here, and one and three Sumner Road in the background. You can note here the existing differences in topography and the retaining walls. This photograph shows, or the next few photographs will be showing travelling east along the public footpath from St Cross Street onto Sumner Road. And this property here is Westgate, which is to the north of the site. So moving along east here, members will note the differing boundary treatments. These photographs show the exposed rear curtilage associated with one Sumner Road. The far end of this curtilage actually lies flush with the far rear curtilage of number 73 East Street. Moving to the matters of principle and technical opinion, these are the principle of development having regard to the location of the site within the developed area of Farnham, housing land supply having regard to the fact that the council does not have a five-year housing land supply and that the proposal would contribute towards this, highways considerations noting that Surrey County Council have raised no objection to the proposed development subject to securing the relevant conditions to ensure safety and operation of the existing highway, impact on heritage assets having regard to the distances and intervening built form between the proposed residential development and the existing heritage assets, flooding and drainage noting that the lead local authority has raised no objection subject to the relevant subs-conditions, land contamination and air quality considerations having regard to the professional opinion of the council's officers who raise no objection to the proposal subject to safeguarding conditions, and effect on the SPA noting that an undertaking has been completed to secure contribution toward Farnham Park sign. Moving to the matters of judgment, members are being asked to exercise their judgment in relation to the loss of suitably located commercial land and to the proposed Class B1 office use, giving consideration for the need of office space within this sustainable town centre location. The town centre retail impact noting that the site would provide a large floor area that cannot be accommodated within existing units within the town centre area, and also giving consideration to the edge-of-town location of the site. Impact on visual amenity noting the scale, form, and design of surrounding built form within the locality. Impact on residential amenity acknowledging that the proposal would have a greater presence upon the occupier of surrounding residential properties, but having regard to the topography of the land, the distances between the built form, and safeguarding conditions. And standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space noting that these accord with the government's technical guidance and that each property would be served by private gardens or terraces or balconies. I can ask members to move on to the update. Officers have received additional information to further support the loss of the existing car dealership and the proposed Class A1 shop use, which demonstrates that the proposed floor area could support a larger retail need that cannot be accommodated within the smaller Class A1 shop units within the town centre. As a further oral update, members may have noticed on page 58 of the agenda, under determining issues, that the heading Archaeological Considerations, that has not been addressed within the body of the report. This heading in itself is an unfortunate error. The site is not within an area of high archaeological value and the site area itself does not meet the criteria for policy HE15 as an unidentified archaeological site. As such, an archaeological assessment has not been required for this application. Therefore, the recommendation remains that set out in the agenda, in that subject to conditions 1 to 23 on pages 95 to 104 of the agenda and informatives 1 to 10 on pages 104 and 106, that permission be granted. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Gemma, and thank you again for a set of good photographs that we could actually see. Thank you very much for that. So we now move to public speaking. The procedure has been explained. So I'll introduce first of all the objectors. Shaun Redgrave to speak. And you have four minutes from the time you start speaking, sir.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Shaun Redgrave. I'm a resident of 16 Thorough... at 16 Thorough Road, which is one of the roads that are up the proposed development. I'm effectively in the north-east corner of the development. My garden is at the top right-hand corner of the pictures you just showed. I've been a resident there for some seven years. All of the members, all of the tenants or residents of Thorough Road, I believe, on the south side were consulted, or at least were given the opportunity to comment. I don't believe anybody on the north side had been. Having spoken to a number of my neighbours, though, I know that they feel very strongly about the development, I would say that part of the work here is done for you in asmuch as everybody agrees that something good needs to come of the old garage that was there. And we welcome the investment into regenerating that, not least because of the continued procrastination on some of the development on East Street and the Walmead, which we think this would be a welcome addition to East Street. The real issue is the scale. This is a massive development and the issue for those who have properties that back on to the development is really in terms of light and the encroachment on light and privacy. So that is really the focus of the concerns from everybody on Thorough Road. And I was reminded of that last weekend. We had a particularly fine weekend, I'm sure you'll remember, but as I work particularly long hours in the city, so does my wife, we don't get to enjoy our garden, or more importantly, perhaps our kitchen, which backs on to the garden. So in the summer months, when you get the opportunity to be in the kitchen, you really rely on the light coming from our south aspect or self-facing garden area. And I think that's the same for everybody on our street. There have been words used in the report about how we'd be affected and words like oblique have been used, but I would say that more importantly, things like loss of daylight and sunlight are important for us and the concept of this overbearing appearance of this gargantuan development. I take the point that there are other properties on East Street and in the locale which are of similar height, but they've been there for over a hundred years. What we're looking at here is building something in front of people's properties. And I don't... I can't reconcile this with the proposed developments with Bright Wells or the Walmead because they are not immediately adjacent to similar properties that have gardens and kitchens, et cetera, that are up the development. So I believe this is somewhat exceptional. Nor can I accept that perhaps there has been a suggestion that this is something that is much needed in Farnham in terms of solving a housing problem, or housing shortage, rather. These are luxury apartments. The penthouse at the top is no doubt going to be hundreds of thousands of pounds. I think we're all in favour of further development to ease the problems in Farnham in terms of housing, but this is somewhat different and I think we should see it for what it actually is. So I take the point that an assessment has been done. Nobody has knocked on my door and asked me whether they could come into my garden and perhaps take a look at the aspect that we see, and I would more than welcome that from the developers or anyone from the council for that matter. But I think when the developers say this is going to be mildly or merely discomforting for those that live on Thorough Road, I would say that is a massive understatement. So I'll rest my case there and I thank the committee for your time.
Thank you, Mr Redgrave. Turn now to introduce the supporter, Damian Blow.
When you're sitting, if you're lucky enough to be going on holiday this year and you're sitting in a lovely, nice plaza in Italy or a nice square in France, sipping your drink and lamenting as your head drops at why we're so poor at some things like plazas, one thing we are really, really good at in this country, and I think we are world-class at, we're really good at streets. Our market towns ironically don't really have markets because the street is the market and as varied as a class photograph, such are our market town streets and such is Farnham. There's the tall skinny one, there's the ginger one, there's the short wide one, the one with spectacles, the one with earrings. There's one who's not looking at the camera. What's so spectacular about our English streets is the variagation in them. They are not monocultural, they're not monochrome. There are tall buildings, there are high-status buildings, there are low-status buildings, there are single-story cottages, there are tall Victorian buildings, there are elevated buildings, there are decorated buildings. They are really... It's really a spectacular fabric and we should be incredibly proud of that. Let's not create a town in a European guise and build a sort of plaza off the back of the street. Let's make the streets of Waverley, Farnham, Godwin, Hazlemere. We need to make the streets where the performance is. That's how the English live. We live on streets. For me, approaching this project, the opportunity, as you can imagine, is so tantalising and exciting for an architect to repair a fairly significant eighty-metre-long gap in a street in a town centre like Farnham, which I love and I'm very passionate about. For me, it's absolutely important that this design sits within a narrative that is about Farnham. It's not about a European plaza, it's not about, you know, mass-produced sort of monochromatic design. This is variagated. It's got setbacks, it's got height. There are high-status buildings here. It's not grandiose, it's not gargantuan, any more than some of the other high-status buildings of Farnham are. This is the principal entrance into Farnham from London. I mean, this is how people would have arrived. I know we love West Street and we love Castle Street and they are spectacular, but people would have arrived historically down East Street. My own daughter, who's fifteen at school, she'd get up at East Street, it's a bit of a dump, isn't it? Well, you know, it doesn't have to be and it didn't used to be. It would have had meadows on the left, which have now got generally cottages, but on the right, as you come from London, on the high bank are the high-status buildings. It is absolutely appropriate to have a high-status building here. We've tried to create a variagated facade with setbacks and with some different architectures that responds to the architecture of Farnham. We think it's really all about Farnham. We've also kept the existing buildings, even though they're not designated and they're not locally listed, they have real value. It is heritage. Finally, one last point I would say in terms of the objections and concerns about overlooking and privacy, I would just say that we are removing a use that were you to apply today, apply for today, would be refused because it would be adverse. And we are now losing, we are now gaining a building which removes an adverse impact, we believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Blow. Members, I open the floor to you.
Chairman, yes, this is in my ward and, yes, I do welcome the arrival of this development, which is further improvement for the East Street area of Farnham. I have noted the comments, however, of residents about the height and I have spent actually quite a long time in the area looking at this. And, I mean, the proposed building, in my opinion, does fit in quite well with the other buildings that surround it. And whilst I would... I understand the residents' concerns, I think that this is only what could be expected on this site. So this is what's going to be built here. I can't see that it can be built a great deal smaller than that. In fact, this is normal these days. So I really will be supporting this development, which I think is going to be a major improvement to the area and to be very, very welcomed.
Then councillor Hill.
Yes, I just wondered if the officers could just address the concerns. Did we have, or have I imagined it, a section showing Thorough Road and the heights? And could you give us some reassurance about the distances and the fenestration? Because that obviously is, from my point of view, the only issue. I'm with councillor Hill. I think it's a very exciting development, but obviously I just want to fully understand the concerns of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, officers are aware of the concerns of the residents as well. I mean, the proposal will have a greater presence than what they're used to at the moment. There are some, you know, smaller buildings and there is an open car parking space, so they haven't got any built form directly to the rear of the curtilage, which is beyond the footpath. So the proposal will in itself have a greater presence. However, officers have carried out the tests in the SPD in terms of distances between boundaries and windows and impacts of overlooking and loss of light and have considered them to be acceptable. Officers have also recommended conditions to remove any sort of perception of overlooking by obscurely glazing some of the windows. In terms of distances, they all do vary between the rear. What I'll do is I've got some distances here, just to give you an idea. There are two types of distances. There are distances between boundaries and there are distances between actual built forms. So, I mean, what you're looking at here, just down the bottom, is the rear elevation of the proposal and then you're looking at the properties or the built form of the properties here. This is the footpath and this would be the boundary wall. So as you can see, there are differing sort of distances, but the ones that the officers have given greatest consideration to are obviously the window distances to the sort of rear private patio areas, which in the majority, all of them, actually, go beyond the twenty-one metres of our standards. The distances which do not fall for our standards are the boundary, the development to the boundary. Some of them fall below that. However, officers have also considered the great length of the garden curtilage in terms of when we're assessing impact of loss of light and the more sort of areas to the rear of the properties which tend to be used more intensely, like the patio areas, officers are satisfied that the proposal will not cause any impact of loss of light to those properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pruchel.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm Ginger and I'm proud as well, so I just thought I'd put that out for the applicant. I'm proud of Farnham and I think that Farnham does need some properties that are in keeping with the town, have diversity, have a unique bill to them. And I think this planning application actually is quite respectful with regards to the area. I think the last thing we want is another garage there or industrial buildings of some sort that will be completely out of keeping of the area and the street scene. We are trying to improve the town and I think this is a massive improvement. And I think the ward member, councillor Hill, has hit the nail on the head and I think we need to... need to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. There was a diagram that showed the height of the new building against what was there at present, I wonder if you could show that one? I think you just went past it, no, it had a red outline, that's the one. Is that, that's showing it from the rear? Yeah?
I believe what the, sorry, I haven't identified what the blue and the red lines are, I believe those are heights of boundary treatment, if it's my understanding.
Okay, okay. The only thing that's, like Counselor Hill, I'm the other ward member, I also support this application, but the thing that did stick out to me was in page eighty-two where you said that they'd be significantly less than eighteen metres. Can I just inquire how much less than eighteen metres the recommendation, the distances from the recommended distance of eighteen metres? This is the comment halfway down, page eighty-two.
So in terms of the, how different the distances are, I mean, some of them range from between nine metres to thirteen metres, so they are different, and you're right, it's eighteen to eighteen with the boundary, but the guidance is very flexible depending on the situation. What officers have considered here, that they have quite long garden curtilages, if the built forms of the properties were much closer and they didn't have as much usable sort of area, then officers, you know, may have come to a different conclusion, but the sort of relationship here with sort of gardens, boundaries back on to each other, certainly in these sort of developed areas, they tend to have these shorter boundary-to-boundary distances. It's because of the length of the garden that officers are satisfied that the proposal will not detrimentally impact.
You feel that provides sufficient mitigation, in other words, for?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Counselor Williamson.
Thanks very much Chairman. I quite like the design despite my natural aversion to flat roofs. However, perhaps you could take me through the access, the one that comes out onto Cross Street, I'm particularly interested in that because that's a rat run which I quite frequently use when Castle Street is blocked and I've got to get out of town. So the access is, sorry. There is an, so there's an access there onto Cross Street, just, so that's where the garage doors are at the moment. Quite difficult, that, I mean, like I said, it's a rat run that, and then the other access is onto E Street. Is that an access there? That's the other access. That's one way into it. Okay, getting out there would have been difficult. Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Officers, any final? Right, in that case, members, if there are no further questions, can I move to the recommendation? Recommendation is permission be granted subject to conditions one to twenty-three and informative one to ten on pages ninety-six to one hundred and six of the report. Those in favour of granting, please show.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you all very much. That concludes our meeting.